Greetings, everyone. We're happy to have you all with us this afternoon. We're just getting started. We're just getting started. I know a lot of people are coming in. But allow me to first welcome everyone to start by stating that we respectfully acknowledge all Native American peoples who have lived on this land since time immemorial. TCU especially acknowledges and pays respect to the Wichita and affiliated tribes upon whose historical homeland our university is located. My name is Dr. Frederick Gooding Jr., Chair of the Race and Reconciliation Initiative here at TCU. Greetings and welcome as we are going to have another installment of the Virtual Town Hall series. Our Race and Reconciliation Initiative is to fulfill the Chancellor's and Board of Trustees' charge to studying slavery, racism, and the Confederacy. We wish to study TCU's relationship with both three. First year research focuses primarily upon Black experience. This is merely the first step we've made, as additional identities and histories of our TCU community must be and will be explored in subsequent years. So again, by way of clarification, the RRI, Race and Reconciliation Initiative, the RRI, is an academically based and historically focused initiative designed to investigate and document TCU's history. While the RRI does not perform the functions of other TCU offices such as inclusiveness and intercultural studies, Office of Institutional Equity or Diversity Equity Inclusion. As a courtesy, we will direct questions outside of our scope and charge to the appropriate proper attention. So presently, part of our action while we research and write a first year server report for Open Sharing in April 2021 is to maintain open channels of communication. And so one of the ways in which we're looking to maintain open channels of communication is through this virtual town hall series. And today's town hall is entitled, well, it's a dialogue and discussion entitled, "How Should TCU Tell the History of the Clark Brothers?" To assist us and to model for us this discussion format, we are honored to have with us the TCU Debate Team, Speech and Debate Team. They are a member of Pi, Kappa Delta, which is a nationally ranked competitive speech and debate program dedicated to learning and practicing the skills that encourage free and open dialogue surrounding important societal issues. Team members have earned national championships in debate, persuasion, discussion, student research, and prompt to in extroverania speaking over the past few years. So recall, this is a dialogue of discussion. So we're not necessarily talking about this statute per se, you know, featuring the Clark Brothers out near university. But we are going to engage and embrace the history regarding the Clark Brothers. And the TCU Debate Speech and Debate Team is going to model for us how we can have this conversation. And so we are fortunate that you all can join us. We're fortunate that our panelists can join us as they provide critical perspective and help us deepen our understanding as we look to ultimately push towards and forwards action healing, or in other words reconciliation. So without any further ado, I'm going to mute my video and mic and bring in our graduate student wonderkind, Mr. Marcellus Perkins, who will take it from here.
Just to reiterate Dr. G's words, today's town hall will be a dialogue among four students who have researched the topic of the founders. You will hear differing views expressed, not a debate, but the winner or loser. Our intent is to model academic practices grounded in research and simple dialogue. At this moment, I will introduce our four panelists. Logan Gibbs is a junior film, television, and journalism double major from Lake Jackson, Texas. His focuses are in critical studies and industry studies, and he plans to pursue graduate education in cinema and media studies. He has been involved with forensics for seven years and has been with the TCU Speech and Debate Team for three years. Matt Gill is a sophomore in Communication Studies and Political Science double major from San Francisco. Matt has been debating competitively for eight years at the state and national level. In his free time, Matt likes to write music. Xander Wick is a junior computer information science major from Tyler, Texas. He is proud to serve as the president of TCU Forensics and is the head speech and debate instructor of the Fort Worth Country Day School. Kathleen Sandoval is a sophomore in Finance and Accounting double major from Houston, Texas. She's a member of the Student Government Association's Finance Committee. She is fluent in Spanish and hopes to become a commercial litigator. Thank you, panelists. At this moment, I will give you all each six minutes to discuss your unique positions on the given question, "How Should We Tell the History of the Clark Brothers?", starting with Mr. Logan Gibbs.
My name is Logan Gibbs, and as today's first speaker, I just wanted to say thank you all so much for being present for this incredibly important issue. We also would like to thank the Race and Reconciliation Initiative for inviting the TCU Speech and Debate Team to ask the question, "How Should TCU Tell the History of the Clark Brothers?" It's important to understand that the history of the Clark Brothers is not as simple as black and white, just as any of our own histories are not that simple. And this questionable history is represented not only in the commemorative statue on the academic commons, but also in the names of the Clark Dormitory, the Adran College of Liberal Arts, and the Clark Society. We in no way believe that the Founder's Statue is the be-all, end-all solution for the issues that Black students face on TCU's campus. But this discussion sees that the Founder's Statue is an important symbol that we can use to contextualize the conversation started by Black students on our campus. There is no denying the involvement that they had in the Confederacy and therefore the connections that the Clark Brothers have to the Civil War, as well as the connections they have to slavery. Today, I begin this dialogue by providing the history of the Clark Brothers that will work to contextualize the solutions proposed by my peers. The way that we will present the likenesses and the history of our founders is a part of our job as members of the TCU community. I'm going to discuss the lives of the Clark Brothers in three ways: the good side, the bad side, and the questionable side. First, the Clark Brothers are the reason that we are all sitting here having this discussion. Without them, TCU would not exist. In 1869, Addison and Randolph Clark, two Fort Worth-based ministry teachers, created the Adran Male and Female College, one of the first coed institutions for higher learning west of the Mississippi. In five years, enrollment swelled to more than 450 members, and the Clark Brothers knew that they were going to need an endowment if they wanted their university to continue to grow. The Clark Brothers forged an affiliation with the disciples of Christ. The school now had a new name and a bright future. The 1873 Charter stated that the Adran Christian University would fulfill its mission to promote literary and scientific education. The relationship with the disciples would continue to be one of heritage and values. This continued relationship supports an approach to education that values the importance of every individual's religious identity. And today, TCU's students come from more than 60 religious traditions and faith across the world. However, we all know that the story of the Clark Brothers also includes some dark points as well. Addison and Randolph Clark both served in the 16th Texas Cavalry. Addison began his service in 1862, and his brother followed him two years later in 1864. And both men served closely with General Lee until the end of the war. The questionable history of the Clark Brothers begins with one important question. Why did they join the war in the first place? Although we may never truly know why Addison or Randolph joined the fight against the North, our best answer comes from the biography of Randolph Clark himself, entitled "Reminiscences Biographical and Historical." In Chapter Four, Randolph recounts the reasons that not only he and his brother joined the fight against the North, but the reasons so many soldiers from the South joined the war. If I could have the slide presentation moved to Slide Two. Many of the boys and young men of the company were members of the same congregation. They were young men in the company who had recently come to Texas from the North and those whose relatives were in the North. They settled no doctrine of states' rights and were opposed to slavery. However, the South was their home. It was invaded, and so they answered the call to defense. This is a quotation from Randolph Clark's biography in Chapter Four. The two excerpts on the screen are from the same biography regarding the involvement that he and his brother had in the war. The men that Randolph is speaking of in this passage are those that were part of the same congregation that he and Addison were ministry teachers. Many of these men, in fact, had traveled hundreds of miles from their homes in the North solely because they sought out Randolph and Addison's congregation. Randolph goes on to say that Addison and I had been taught from childhood that Christians were not to go to war. Addison extended these teachings to his congregation. He taught that Christians should not go to war. These passages indeed give the message that neither Randolph nor Addison believed in the war and actively taught against it. However, several passages further down, Randolph states that while Addison preached against the war, and I quote, "It was easier to preach non-resistance than to practice it in the face of an invading army," end quote. These conflicting passages are important in understanding that the history of the Clark Brothers is far more complicated than it may seem at first glance. In a later passage of the novel, Randolph states, "Addison kept his own counsel, did not discuss the war problems. In writing to a friend who was elated over the prospects of military glory, Addison said, 'It is a good time to be calm and take one's reckoning. The people will soon know who the unsafe advisors are. Some Washington may arise and lead the people to safety, but just now the political fools are in appearance.' He was slow to prophesize the future. He made up his mind as to his individual duty and advised with no one. Addison was impelled by no ambition or place for glory, had no personal or sectional hate to gratify. He only volunteered among the first that went out to the front." These passages describe how Addison did not join the war because of ambition, hate, or glory. He joined the war because his home was being invaded. However, in the context of the Civil War and what it stood for, it's hard for us 150 years later to separate these two ideals. There is no way for any of us to truly know why Addison or Randolph joined the war. But we do know that the Civil War stood for the enslavement of African Americans in the South. Regardless of the reasons the Clark Brothers joined the war efforts, they did in fact join the war nonetheless. We may never know either Randolph or Addison's personal feelings towards slavery. But because they joined a war that was founded on the oppression of African Americans in this country, they taint the values of our university and bring into question the values of our university. By brandishing dorms and buildings with the names of our founders without recognizing their involvement in the Confederacy, we do a disservice to our university and bring into question everything that we stand for as TCU faculty, staff, and students. It is important for us to understand that the history of the Clark Brothers is murky and unclear. That is why it's important for us to engage in this dialogue to attempt to unravel the history to the best of our abilities and then take what we now know about the Clark Brothers to make an informed decision about how we as a university want to represent our founders going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Logan. My name is Matt Gill, and I'll be presenting another solution on this same topic. In 1984, Desmond Tutu received the Nobel Peace Prize for his work against systemic oppression in South Africa. It was in this time that Desmond Tutu advised us, "If you are neutral in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor." Throughout history, speaking against injustice has never involved popularity. It has always been hard fought and contentious. If it were easy, simply put, it wouldn't be history. It is in situations in which we can choose to do nothing that we must choose to do something bold and often unpopular. This is the sentiment which leads me to propose the solution of total removal of the Founder's Statue. I'll be framing my discussion today around what I believe to be the most important issue in any discussion concerning the feelings of Black students at TCU, which is the expressed requests of Black students at TCU. And to delve into that further, Randolph and Addison Clark, despite founding our university, were known supporters of the Confederacy. And even beyond the reprehensible nature of their past actions, the ramifications of their presence have continued to present day, leading Black students to march at the statue in the spring of 2020 and leading a group of undergraduate and graduate students from various historically marginalized backgrounds to demand the removal of the statue in a formal letter to TCU. Quote, "We also demand that the Founder's Statue be removed and replaced with a plaque that explicitly acknowledges their participation as Confederate soldiers in the American Civil War. Their participation in the Confederacy should also be mentioned in every other public and written historical acknowledgement and commemoration of the founders Addison and Randolph Clark," end quote. Corroborating this, the NAACP finds Confederate statues to be hate symbols and thus something to be removed and seriously considered moving into the future. So next, let's talk about specifically, why am I proposing removal as opposed to going towards an alternate strategy? The simple answer is it's what Black students have asked for. It's what they formally requested, and it's what they've protested to try to achieve. Moving the statue does not solve the broader issue and does not grant the requests of Black students at TCU who have expressly raised concerns that it harms them at an emotional level and that the ramifications are indeed significant, which is something that we need to acknowledge. Next, moving into the next point of contention, significance, prioritization, and the concept of active benefit versus active detriment. This theory comes from the Theory of Social Sorting by Liliana Mason, which finds that social identity is only relevant when it is either being oppressed or when it is oppressing. To put this in lighter terms, my identity as a horned frog is not particularly important while I am at TCU. While I'm surrounded by students who also identify as horned frogs, it simply isn't important to me because it's not unique and it doesn't conflict with the people around me. But if I, as a horned frog, were to go to SMU, my social identity as a horned frog becomes far more important because I'm in direct conflict with the majority identity of SMU's campus representing the Mustangs. To put this in the context of our own statue and our own concerns today, we see that our majority white campus only finds the statue important when it is threatened to be taken down, whereas the marginalized groups of TCU deal with the ramifications of the statue daily. It isn't a struggle. They get to simply turn off because we stopped debating and we stopped having this discussion. Ultimately, it comes down to the point of active benefit versus active detriment. We do not gain active benefit in education from having the statue present on campus. However, Black students have expressed that there is active detriment by having the statue on campus. People walking simply to the library to hang out with their friends or go to anything on the academic quad have to walk past that statue. And if a large portion of our campus has expressed that it does indeed bring up ramifications, that is something significant that we need to take concrete action to reconcile as members of the TCU community. Indeed, we need to prioritize making this campus a home for everybody. The next theory comes from Royzen Mulligan, author of A Tangible Step Towards an Ideal, a doctor affiliated with Vancouver Island University who explains how social recognition theory contributes to the recognition of an individual's value in society. Mulligan explains social recognition theory as the tendency of humans to determine their own identity and value in the context of feedback from other parties. TCU can play a role in fulfilling this theory by recognizing the requests of Black students and thus demonstrating their true value to the community. The next point is solidarity. Part of recognizing my privilege as a white debater is recognizing that I don't have the perspective to understand what the statue truly represents to the marginalized groups which call TCU home. It is not and should not be our responsibility to determine whether or not their concerns are valid. We have no context in which to understand how our peers feel. Rather, we must do the difficult thing and listen unconditionally. Indeed, we must show support. We must show that we care more about TCU making it a home for everyone than we do about the educational ramifications of the statue. In conclusion, being progressive in the 21st century means a whole lot more than simply not being racist. We have to be non-neutral. We must be bold and we must be decisive. So help us make that bold and decisive action by removing the statue from TCU's campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. My name is Xander Wick. I'll be going over, excuse me. I'll be advocating for the removal of the statue, but also I'll present a solution for how to move forward as a university. So for 80 years, the bronze statue of British politician Cecil Rhodes towered over students and faculty alike at the University of Cape Town. Originally placed in 1935, students in 2015 protested the statue of Rhodes and called for its removal with persistent protest and a vigorous social media campaign. #RoadsMustFall, they said. It's difficult to imagine how a bronze statue of someone in deep thought could invoke such a response at a university. But for the students and faculty at the University of Cape Town, Rhodes wasn't just a politician. It was a symbol of British imperialism and a precursor to apartheid, a past that nobody wanted idolized or repeated. Like the University of Cape Town, TCU has its own controversial monuments and history. Today, I am proud to advocate for the removal of the Clark Brothers statue for two reasons. First, there's precedence in the removal of these monuments. And second, the statue has grown to become a symbol of hate beyond what the original sculptor had intended. But furthermore, I'll present a possible solution to how the university can move forward. So first, there's precedence in the removal of controversial monuments nationwide. As the American Historical Association stated, "The removal of a monument is not to erase history, but rather to emphasize a different interpretation of the historical events." According to the Southern Poverty Law Center, over 102 removals have taken place since May of this year. The removals of Confederate monuments include schools, streets, and statues across the nation. On college campuses, these movements are often student and faculty-led. Matt told us how other schools have listened to students and how that's important. But on August 20th of 2017, UT Austin President Greg Finby sent workers in the dead of night to remove four Confederate statues. When UT Austin did this, they did this with the best of intentions. They wanted to remove the statues that harmed the community, but they didn't involve the community as a whole or work with the community and impacted students in order to come up with the solution. Second, let's talk about how the statue is not a current symbol of TCU's values. So attached on the slide in front of you, you'll see an image of Randolph Clark's graves in Stephenville, Texas. The grave is located about an hour and a half away from here. As you can see, there are Confederate flags visible on the grave site, and in every image that you can see of the grave, Confederate flags are visible. So we can see that while the Clark Brothers may have originally not been adamant about the Confederacy, the Clark Brothers are becoming a symbol for Confederate ideals. And so I want to bring up the idea of agonism, and it's the idea that we can't change history, but we can recognize the actions of the Clark Brothers without idolizing ideas that we shouldn't idolize. We cannot change the fundamental history of TCU. However, we can change the discussion around the Clark Brothers to be comprehensive and to understand their good and bad deeds holistically. And we can see in recent examples with the state flag in Mississippi. So for almost 127 years, the state flag in Mississippi has had the Canton in the corner of the Confederate flag. In June of this year, a bipartisan state legislator voted to change the flag, and it's up for reelection in November. So we can move forward. While we can't change the past, we can change what we idolize. So third, let's talk about a potential solution and how the university can move forward. Can we move to the next slide? Thank you. So attached in front of you, you'll see a satellite view between Sather Hall and University Drive. So the motto of the engineering colleges were "Open Doors, Open Minds", and I'd like to keep this in mind as we propose a solution for TCU. It's important that we recognize prominent figures in TCU's history and growth and a place open to the public and the TCU community. And I can't think of a better place of where we could do this, but right here in front of the old administration building in full view of the public and visible to students and faculty alike. I would like to propose an outdoor student-organized and developed space to honor the important figures in TCU's history. The first plaque will be of the Clark Brothers. We can recognize the actions that the Clark Brothers did, both good and bad, and recognize holistically their actions. Second, there are many, many TCU figures that deserve to be honored that the university doesn't have a place for yet. A perfect example of this is Aleen Jones, who graduated in the class of 1963. Aleen Jones was one of the first African-American students on campus, but she became the first Black professor specializing in psychiatric nursing. There are many, many other figures like Aleen from TCU who deserve to be recognized. But most importantly, unlike what other universities have done in the past, this project can be student-led and organized. So in conclusion, Logan mentioned that we wouldn't be here without the Clark Brothers, and that's true. We can still recognize their accomplishments without honoring the legacy of the Confederacy, and I can't think of a better way to do that than with the History Plaza. Thank you.
Thank you, Xander. My name is Kathleen Sandoval, and I will be discussing the rhetoric of memorializing the statue of TCU's founders with a plaque as opposed to removing it. In organizing this discussion, I will speak first about whitewashing and historical revisionism. Second, I'll be looking at the statue as art. And lastly, I will go into what we should do instead. So first, let's talk about whitewashing and historical revisionism. The French historian Dimitri Cassali is quoted for saying that "we cannot rewrite history. Taking down statues of our statesmen would be like opening up Pandora's Box of historical revisionism. We must accept history. It's as much glorious as it is shameful." In attempts to rewrite history, the lived experiences of those who suffered under broken systems are not honored. We already have a hard time digging up history. Do we want to make it even harder to access that history? And as a result, conceal unpleasant facts, which is by definition whitewashing. Making things vanish, like in the UT case that Xander brought up, does not make things better. It makes it easier to pretend that the history isn't real. Even today, there are many ways in which the history of the discovery of this continent is whitewashed. We literally still celebrate Columbus Day, which is observed in a way that pays no attention to the lived experiences of indigenous peoples who inhabited the Americas long before the arrival of Christopher Columbus. Kevin Govert, the director of the Smithsonian's National Museum of the American Indian and a citizen of the Pawnee Tribe of Oklahoma, finds that the observance of Columbus Day is the outgrowth of a whitewashed history perpetuated in public discourse and in our schools where native and non-native children from the earliest age are taught simplistic, incomplete, and inaccurate information about American Indians. We do ourselves no good by ignoring what happened and failing to acknowledge the truth of our institution and the brothers who contributed to its founding. Let's now observe the statue as art. And if we can go to the next slide. Carol Thornton, a member of the class of 1948, was a longtime teacher, artist, gallery owner, and author. She passed away in October of 2013 at the age of 87. In a 1992 interview with TCU Magazine, Carol Thornton shared that Addison and Randolph were 30, 31 years old when they established TCU and that Chancellor William E. Tucker, who graduated in the class of 1956, wanted students to realize they can do great things without having beards and being 60 years old. Do we want to erase the work of someone who contributed much to our campus? What are we saying about how much we care about those who have contributed to this institution and what it is today? Thornton was certainly not a white supremacist who sculpted the statue as a way to honor the Confederacy. A lot went into making the statue, and to remove it would be to disregard her contribution as well as the artistic value of her work. So let's consider what we should do instead. And if we can go to the next slide. Because of the harms of whitewashing history, engaging in historical revisionism, and dishonoring the work of a member of the TCU community, I suggest that we contextualize the statue with a plaque. And not just the statue, but the buildings named after the Clark Brothers as well. To be specific, the buildings include the Clark Dormitories and the Adran College of Liberal Arts. The plaque should recognize that the Clark Brothers fought for the Confederacy. I'd like to take a moment to say that people are products of the context in which they are born. We all exist within a context and a timeframe. Over different time periods, we propagate things that we look back on with shame. For Americans in the 21st century, something we should all look back on with great shame is this nation's history of slavery. In future years, hopefully, people will look back on us today with great shame because Americans have consumed porn and contributed to the prevalence of human trafficking by doing so. Hopefully, people will look back in disbelief of the fact that in the 21st century, an estimated 40 million people lived in slavery. We best serve our students and our community by acknowledging this history head-on instead of erasing it. We do more good by recognizing the shameful parts of our founders' history as well as their commendable accomplishments. And with that, we can open this up to a discussion. And with that, we can open this up to a discussion. And Matt, can you start us off with the first question?
Yes, absolutely. I'll just wait for everybody's cameras to go on. Sweet. Okay. So Logan, the first question is directed to you. Can you discuss a little bit about the relationship between the Clark Brothers' ambiguous past and the issue at hand today?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think the crux of the first argument here is that the majority of the Clark Brothers' history is questionable. We had to do a bunch of research just to find the limited amount of information we could find. And I think that it's really important for us to understand the good and the bad, as well as the things that we're not sure about. We're not sure about the ties that the Clark Brothers had to slave owners in particular. There's a bunch about the Clark Brothers that we're not sure of, and that is why it's really important to have this discussion and to do the research that goes into making a decision, like removing the statue or commemorating with a plaque or donating it to a museum. There's a lot about the Clark Brothers that we still don't know. And that's why the questionable history of the founders is so important, especially in the realm of a discussion like this.
Thank you for that. Definitely. Good points there. Kind of on a similar vein of representing TCU's history, Xander, this question's towards you. So you proposed a solution that would involve a History Plaza sort of in front of the Sattler region. Could you talk about what opportunities that Historical Plaza represents for representing graduates and significant members of the TCU community?
Absolutely. I'd love to. So right now, I mean, there's really nothing there on that portion of Sattler, although we could relocate to something else. But the idea behind the History Plaza is that we can recognize the Clark Brothers for what they did, and again, not idolizing them for their mistakes. However, recognizing that they did found TCU, but then also give us a reoccurring chance to recognize the outstanding community members that we all know and love. I mentioned Aileen Jones, but there's lots of other community members that we could recognize. And ideally, this would be a student-led project, both in the initial implementation, but then also in the reoccurring, who do we honor? So my vision is for an outdoor plaque walkway where we could have multiple plaques. But again, this is a conversation that we should have with the entire TCU community as a whole.
Yes, thank you. Kind of on the vein of conversation, Kathleen, so you talked a lot about the drawbacks of "we don't want to be historical revisionists. We don't want to whitewash the history of TCU, and we don't want to forget any of the things that have led to this important discussion." So could you maybe talk about why it's important to preserve art and history while also recognizing the requests and experiences of Black students? And then a little bit about how those two things can coexist?
Yeah, of course. I love that you brought that up. How this idea of recognizing the requests of Black students on our campus is not mutually exclusive with also preserving this history and making sure that we're not being historical revisionist in removing the statue and taking it down. And so there are a lot of other solutions that can essentially meet both of those objectives. And maybe one of the solutions is to have the statue donated or to move the statue to a less popular part on campus so that we can also be meeting the requests of Black students on campus who have voiced their discomfort with the presence of the statue.
And Kathleen, just sort of as a follow-up, I think that you would also agree that recognizing our history and ensuring that we don't fall into the trap of revisionism is a sort of active process. Could you maybe talk a little bit about what all of us can do to make sure that we're acknowledging that history and then growing and progressing from that?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think that it's important to recognize that it is a process that we're all working towards living in an ideal society and in an ideal nation. And unfortunately, this world is still far from ideal, and every single one of us can make contributions to making this a better place because we are still not where we want to be. I mentioned at one point in my speech that in 2017, 40 million people still lived in slavery and were enslaved. And there are still ways in which Americans and people outside of this nation still contribute to the prospect of human trafficking and contribute to its prevalence by consuming pornography. And that is still a very real issue today. And so that's kind of one specific way that we can be looking to making this a better place.
Yes, definitely. Xander, you mentioned at a point in your speech that discussion is a really important part of the process of reconciliation and that we should be involving students in as much of the process as we can in order to make it the most effective solution for everybody. Could you talk about, first, why discussion is really important? Like the importance of discourse? And then, second, how we are currently going about addressing the issues with discussion and how we can continue to further that discussion?
So I think that this discussion in itself is kind of, you know, already a starting point for having that campus-wide discussion. It's important to note that in the case of the University of Texas at Austin, where they removed the statues, there was no student or faculty involvement there. At that point, the university president and the Board of Regents just unilaterally made that decision to remove the statue. In other cases, when administration tried with the best of intentions, for example, at the University of Mississippi, unlike UT Austin, they didn't take away the statues and put them in storage, but rather moved them to a different place. But when they did that, they actually created a shrine to the statues that they had intended to put less attention on. So it's really, really important that we involve students and faculty alike in this discussion so that we make the right decision moving forward. As we come together as a TCU community, I believe that that's the best decision-making process that we can do.
Yeah, definitely. Logan, so a lot of your speech focused around the history of the Clark Brothers and how we came to where we are right now. Throughout the discussion, we've touched on different points about the importance of representing history and the potential solutions to how we can solve the problems of race and reconciliation, which we have at hand. What ways do you believe that we should represent the Clark Brothers? And then why is it important to represent their contributions, their shortcomings, and their flaws as historical characters?
I think that's a great question. I bring up in the last couple of minutes of my speech that it really shows the kind of community that we are at TCU in how we answer the tough questions about our founders. Because, of course, they did stuff that we are proud of. They founded our university, but at the same time, they did things that we shouldn't be proud of. And I think it's our duty as students, as faculty, as staff of this university to find a way to present the good that they did while also condemning the bad that they did. And I think Kathleen brought up in the discussion so far, one of the ways that we can do that is by removing the statue from campus, but at the same time donating it to the city of Fort Worth or donating it to the Texas Civil War Museum. So that way, the art that Kathleen is talking about in her speech is still preserved while at the same time meeting the requests of the Black students on campus as well as commemorating the, I'm sorry, contextualizing the buildings like the Clark Dormitory and the Adran College, buildings that we cannot move from campus. I think that that's a great example of something that we, as students, can advocate for on this campus, especially because we've already seen it happen in 2014. The state of Mississippi rounded up 70 statues across the state that were in public view in public spaces and put them into the Mississippi Civil War Museum. And so we've already seen it happen. And so I think that that is a really clear and possible example of a solution that we can advocate for.
Definitely. Xander, so in your speech, again, drawing back to your solution, one thing that was certainly omitted in the solution was that we would not have the statue as a part of the Historical Plaza. Could you talk about why that's important? And then also what we're doing to also recognize the Clark Brothers within that plaza?
Absolutely. So obviously, the solution that I propose should be modified by students and faculty. But I'm strongly opposed to putting the statue in that History Plaza, kind of for the reasons that I mentioned before, that if we do so, we run the risk of putting the statue in a shrine, whether we intend to do so or not, which obviously we don't. But we run that risk, and that risk is too great. But at the same time, the History Plaza still offers us a lot of opportunities to recognize the good things that the Clark Brothers did for our university. I would suggest doing that with a plaque. But again, we have very, very creative students and faculty here at TCU, and I would be very excited to see what ideas they had as well of how we could honor the founders without idolizing them. But yes, but a plaque or some kind of designation, both saying what they did correctly and what they did incorrectly, would be ideal on that location.
Great. Kathleen, one of the things that you talked about, I've already mentioned it previously, but was about historical revisionism. In the solution that you proposed in your speech, how can we ensure that we don't meet the brink of historical revisionism and whitewashing? Essentially, what I'm asking is how do we make sure that that doesn't happen in whatever solution we decide on?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And Logan sort of touched on this, the idea of how we're not destroying a statue and we're not destroying the art and the sculpture that Ms. Carol Thornton created for the campus community. But in donating it or in potentially moving it to a different location on campus, we're preserving that. And especially with the presence of a plaque, which explicitly acknowledges the unpleasant history of our founders, we're really avoiding this historical revisionism by facing that head-on and saying, "This is something that our founders did. This is something that they contributed to." But at the end of the day, they are still responsible for founding our institution.
And then Kathleen, following up to that, previously in the discussion, you talked about some of the ways that we perpetuate discrimination in modern-day slavery in our society that weren't necessarily discussed in each of our individual proposals. Could you talk a little bit about how we can continue those discussions and why it's important to continue the discussion of that we aren't in a definitive solution in this discussion?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. And I think that I'm guilty of this, of feeling as though slavery has been eradicated because in the United States, it's illegal to own slaves. But sometimes I forget that in very real ways, we propagate slavery today. The Alliance 8.7 Coalition, which is comprised of UNICEF and over 200 other organizations, again, gave us this estimate that 40 million people were enslaved in 2017, and we contribute to that. And normal people who we consider to be reasonable are a part of the forces that keep slavery intact today. And Catherine McKinnon from the University of Michigan Law School comments that in material reality, pornography is one way. Women and children are trafficked for sex. And this is a real problem that we're still facing in the 21st century. And it's not something that we really touched on in our speeches today, but it's still a reality in this world.
Right. Sort of in that similar vein, there's a lot of information that is just not readily apparent, not readily present. And I think, Logan, you probably ran into that problem a lot in researching your position and your history on the Clark Brothers. Could you maybe talk about your research process in terms of the difficulties that came up with finding information on them? And then maybe why that's important towards disseminating information on these important subjects?
Yeah, of course. The main article that I used in my research was the biography by Randolph Clark. And I talked about how that's not the most trustworthy source in the world because it is a first-person source. But that's really the only archival piece of research that exists that's readily available. There's documents from the Clark Brothers in the TCU archives, but nothing that confirms or denies whether they themselves were slave owners or whether or not their family or close friends were slave owners. That information isn't readily available. And I think that that's really unfortunate because that's a key piece of research that would help a lot of people either come to terms with the bad that they did or help us all to understand that if they were slave owners, if they perpetuated those ideas, then that goes much further than just being present in the Civil War. And so I think that that's where the research comes in. And I think that that's where the RRI is really important, is like a research-based organization. Their goal, especially through dialogues like this, is to increase not only the awareness, but the availability of research like that that helps everyone make informed decisions and have information that helps make informed decisions in a society all the way around.
Now, certainly in today's brief discussion, we aren't going to be able to definitively solve all of the problems that we've addressed today. But in terms of just our discussion of the Clark Brothers and how we should address their history on campus, I think it's time to come to some sort of a consensus about what we believe those actions should be. Xander, could you maybe talk about what our consensus should be?
Absolutely. So kind of synthesizing everything that we've talked about today, really, I think that there's three things that we need to do in order to move forward. The first is to donate the statue either to the city of Fort Worth or to the Civil War Museum so that it's not on TCU's campus. Second, is to contextualize the buildings that have the Clark name on it with a plaque that recognized the actions of the founders, both good and bad. And then third, is to initiate a History Plaza with student and faculty involvement, where we can honor the actions of the Clark Brother for founding the university, but at the same time, recognizing what they did wrong, but also giving us an opportunity to recognize current and past outstanding TCU graduates.
So can we all be in consensus of that solution?
Yeah, I think that Xander raises a lot of points that we've all hit on through the discussion that I think that that's one of the clear consensus that committed.
So the last thing that will contribute is just some brief thank yous. Thank you for coming to listen. Our part as TCU forensics and being a part of this discussion was a lot of fun. We definitely enjoyed researching this topic. But more than that, it's a really important conversation that we're learning a lot about and that we know that our discussion today was not definitive. So our challenge to you is to continue to be self-critical in considering the ways that we all perpetuate systemic racism and discrimination. And thank you for TCU for allowing us the opportunity to continue this conversation.
Absolutely. So again, before we start, I just want to thank you all for your time, effort, and energy in engaging in this conversation today. For everyone at home, please give them a hand clap of praise and acknowledgement for their hard work. So I have a couple of questions for you all that's more aligned with the preparation for today. The first question that I would like to ask you all, what surprised you the most during preparation? And this question is open to anyone who wants to grab it.
I'll take it because I think we've already hit on it a little bit. The most surprising thing to me was the lack of information that's available, especially with an issue that's so all-consuming on our campus, on our campus in particular. And there's a lot of important pieces of information that we just don't have in order to make an informed decision. And so I thought there should be more information available, and I was really surprised at the lack of information.
And just to follow up with you, given the lack of information, how do you think the institution should view the Clark Brothers? Statue aside, not looking at the statue, but the Clark Brothers as people. I know that someone said earlier that they are products of the context that they were born and raised into. But how should the institution view them, the founders of the institution?
Yeah, I'll take that question. I mentioned that in my speech that they very much were products of the, brought up the biography of one of the Clark Brothers. In it, it reveals that he wasn't writing out sentences that professed his, for certain for a certain group of people. And so it's important to be them people who were infallible and there is not a single person who didn't have flaws. Like every single person has flaws. And I mentioned today even how normal people is century in this century still propagate slavery and prudent. And I think that in the future, it would be the, how those individuals are treated and to see how our actions are by future generations deemed heinous and unacceptable.
Just to kind of give a follow-up question to you, I think you bring up a good point. What I, what I heard you say is that when looking at the past with the lens of the present, it can be somewhat confusing on how we view their morals, correct? Given as such as, you know, that's really what we're doing here today is kind of looking at the past with the lens of the present. Given a change of consciousness, given a change of society, what is the responsibility of the everyday TCU community member? Who wants to represent TCU, has a love for their school, can acknowledge the complex history of the founders, but still feel as if though, you know, without these founders, my institution would not exist. Is there enough room for both to exist?
I can go ahead and take that. I think that definitely there is room for both of those perspectives to exist. I think that what we talked about today, being the most important, is the role that the statue itself plays in fulfilling that role. And I think that the consensus we came to today was that the statue does not play a role in continuing that like perspective of recognizing history. In fact, we would say that much more than that, we should prioritize the expressed concerns of black students at TCU who have made it very clear that the statue has very clear ramifications. So I would say that beyond history, that we prioritize that comfort and that priority more than we do in having the statue be the way that we portray the history of the university.
One other thing that I, I was interested in is a, did anything in your perspective change while doing the research in preparation for today? And that goes to anyone again.
I'll take that. I, I was a little on the fence before I started doing, you know, extensive research, especially for topics like this. I think it's really, really important to stay open-minded before you start your research and to kind of just go wherever the research takes you before you really decide kind of the direction that you want to go to. But the more and more that, you know, I've done the research on the Clark Brothers, even with the limited information that we had, it became very clear that the statue had no place on the campus. While it's difficult to find certain pieces of information, we can, you know, there are historical elements that point us in the direction that the statue doesn't have a place. For example, while we don't know whether or not they had slaves definitively, their battle cry as they went into battle in the Confederate Armory, army was, "No quarter for the officers. Kill the damned abolitionists." That was quote. And that, you know, we can go back in history and see, you know, elements like this and kind of take them into perspective for what kind of figures. And then how do we make sure that we don't idolize ideals that aren't worth idolizing?
Thank you. Thank you. So we're, we're getting close to a thirty-minute mark. So I wanted to give time for our chair, Dr. G, to come in and conclude us again. Panelists, I just want to thank you for your preparation today. Thank you for all of our attendees. You could have been anywhere in the world or anywhere on Zoom, but you're here with us. And for that, we appreciate you. Dr. G?
Absolutely, absolutely. So we're so very appreciative of the TCU Speech and Debate Team for joining this space and for stimulating us with some very compelling points. I mean, we heard a number of different ideas. And I think what we want to do is continue to stay in contact and stay in conversation. One of the ways in which we can do this is we have a couple of upcoming events I wanted to share with you. Because I think one of the students said it best, this idea that we want to continue to dialogue so that we can make an informed decision, the best decision. I think the best decision is going to come about through us maintaining contact and maintaining conversation. I just wanted to clarify that, you know, the object of today's town hall was not to make a final decision. This is not to make a definitive pronouncement. What we're looking to do is simply put the pieces out on the table and as indicated by a few of the discussants, understand where the gaps are in our history so that we can drill down and understand what that history is and what it means for us as we move forward and wish to shape our future legacy. Because I think for us, what we wanted to do here today was establish the dialogue about the Clark Brothers, right? As far as who they are as people and what they mean. And then once we understand that, we can then advance and move towards this ultimate. Well, I mean, that's not the ultimate. I mean, we have a number of questions to answer on our campus and through this process. But one of them will be what to do perhaps with the statue. It is a founder statute. It's not a Confederate statute by definition as it was, you know, created in the later period, as mentioned, in nineteen ninety-three is dedicated. There aren't any Confederate insignia necessarily on, on it. It was created in the post-reconstruction period. But what is clear is that the individuals, the statute is made in their likeness, have ties to the Confederacy. So that part is clear. So we want to understand what these founders mean to us, you know, and understand their history. Because it's difficult to draw a line down the middle. Pardon the expression, history is neither black nor white. They can be quite gray. But I think what is clear is that we have ideas and values that we uphold to be true. And so that is in conflict with the ideas that were discussed as far as Confederacy and the supporting enslavement. And at the same time, this idea of, I think, mentioned by one of the discussants, how do you recognize how at that time, what was considered forward-thinking? TCU by being a COVID institution, opening up as co-ed was considered one of the only COVID institutions west of the Mississippi at that time. That was considered forward-thinking. And so how do we reconcile, right? The complexities of all these pieces? What is it that we want to do in terms of telling the full story moving forward? That is what we're doing. That's, that's, that's the process that we're, that we're engaging as far as opening up these channels for continued dialogue and discussion. Because I agree that it's going to take multiple inputs from many sectors of our TCU community in order for us to move forward together. And so with that being stated, there is a few more opportunities by which we can do so before the end of the semester. And that would be next, not next, but a couple of Fridays from now, the sixth of November. From twelve to one, we have what is called our informal roundtable discussions. Our town halls, which are roughly around the third, Thursday of every month, have been geared around more formalized topics, trying to showcase various aspects of our TCU community. But from twelve to one, actually appropriately behind the Abeyance Statue, under the tents, more social distancing will be observed. From twelve to one, you're more than welcome to come through and continue to talk about topics related to race. That is, after all, the name of our initiative, the Race and Reconciliation Initiative. And so we want to make sure that we're creating time and space to talk about this topic of race. After all, many of our classes may or may not have the time or wherewithal to factor in these discussions. But these discussions need to be had. They're very vital, important for our continued growth and development. And so that's taking place on the sixth of November. It's called Running the Race Roundtable Discussion. On the twelfth of November, you can join us for our last virtual town hall meeting for the semester. Because believe it or not, our semester ends before the end of November. And so three-thirty, you can join us as I and future Dr. Marcellus Perkins will hold court to talk about the, the Race and Reconciliation Initiative, the State of Our Union. We're going to share with you our comprehensive analysis and assessment of what other schools have been doing and have done. And then give you updates as to what we've been able to do in the short period of time that we've been assembled thus far. And so we've been grinding every day, building the staircase as we climb because there is a lot of work to be done and a lot of good work that still we have yet to uncover and discover as we are looking forward to moving forward together. So the last piece I'll mention is that be on the lookout in the spring semester as we are looking to add to our slate of the informal talks, roundtable talks in our formal town halls, doc talks. We have an archival team that is fast at work, that is going through all the archives that have been mentioned. Again, I, I think that's a very key point made, this idea of, well, if we have the information or don't have the information, that's going to affect our ability to have a full conversation. And so that's what we're looking to do is go through the archives systematically to find what we find. And we're going to start having opportunities. We'll, we'll inform you all on our microsite, our website, which you can find at tcu.edu backslash RRI, Roger Roger Indigo. If you type that in, it will direct you to our microsite and we'll have updates as to what the rhythm and frequency of these doc talks are. But that's something to also look out for as we're looking to involve as many people as possible. So if you enjoy the TCU Speech and Debate Team, you should because these students are hard at work, you know, fighting the good fight. And we also are looking to increase the amount of people who are involved in this conversation and this dialogue and discussion as we're looking forward to moving forward together. So in conclusion, allow me to state that I, I cannot as chair on behalf of the Race and Reconciliation Initiative make any promises as to what will happen as a result of our truth-telling efforts to connect with the history as outlined by the charge of studying TC's relationship with slavery, racism and the Confederacy. I can't make any promises. But what I do pledge is that we and everyone affiliated with the RRI, all the volunteers and all the hard workers, we are doing the best we can with what we have. Until next time.